I've got friends all over the world and they speak French and I do not. So, I can't be their friends until I speak French. So, Skylar learns French every day. We're changing the world to le jour. Yes, we're changing the world. Aujourd'hui, oh, we're changing the world. Chaque fois, on change le monde. That's my new theme song. Hey, everybody. My name is Skylar. Welcome to Skylar Learns French. Bienvenue, uh, bienvenue au nouveau épisode, uh, de, de mon programme, Skylar Learns French. Et aujourd'hui, est la nouvelle. J'ouviens de mes ventes. Uh, je suis une beautiful day. I, I don't know how to say that quite yet. Il faut beau. Wrong? No, that's the weather. Okay, obviously, I don't know what I'm doing. It's day 11 of my 30-day challenge. Um, I have done, uh, 10 of these episodes so far. We've gotten through one chapter in a book. We're on chapter 2 now. And, uh, my mission is to learn French. I've got 30 days to try to get as many chapters as I can. And then, um, we'll see where we go. Tomorrow, I have a special guest. Very excited. It'll be the first time we do a guest who will actually, uh, correct me, probably. If you're new to the show, I make a lot of mistakes. Um, if you're trying to learn French, uh, this is probably not the best way to do it. But, um, if you are, I hope this encourages you to, uh, make a fool of yourself too, because it doesn't matter. Um, and if you aren't trying to learn French, hang out. Poke fun at me, I don't care. It's fine. This is really for me, um, and trying to keep myself accountable. That's the whole point. 30-day challenge, it's out in the world for everyone to see. Um, as embarrassing as it is for me, that's what's happening. Okay, so, uh, today's show, we'll start off with, um, some show corrections from last episode. Uh, just as a reminder, Squibb, uh, says, uh, how to pronounce es. Um, and we, we were, uh, we learned last episode, so there's a little bit of review, but you could just say es. Es, es, es. Right. Um, thank you, Squibb. Andrew, again, uh, helped us pronounce brown. Um, the masculine form is brun. There is no n. Uh, the feminine is bru-n, n, brun, but masculine is brun, brun. Okay? Um, that's great. Chops, yesterday, the difference between lavier and levier. Because I was getting confused. Why, why wouldn't I? They're almost, they're practically the same word, right? And they're kind of in the same context. So he says lavier is to wash, while levier is to get up. Totally makes sense. Or it makes sense why I was confused. You do both of those in the morning, right? Uh, je me lève is I get up. Je me lave, I wash. Thanks, Chops. Appreciate the help, buddy. Okay, oh, Chops again here. Uh, tips on how to say confinement. I said it right. Don't pronounce the t. I was saying confiniment. Confinement. Remember, confini- confinement is, uh, confinement or, uh, isolation. Or quarantine, because we're in quar- a lot of people are in quarantine. Actually, a lot of these videos are made in quarantine. Um, okay. Uh, da-da-da-da. So that's all the show corrections. That's great. Um, now, I'm going to jump over to cool things people said in the comments real fast. Kelsey says, um, how do you, how do you say this? Tu, oh, she says, you rock. Toujere?
Kelsey, toujere.
Toujere, toujere. Kelsey, toujere. You rock. Thanks, thanks so much for the help. Um, and then, ah, that's backwards. Chops again, thanks, buddy. Man, you were so helpful. Je suis tellement fier de toi. Which is, I'm so proud of you. Great. Um, je suis tellement fier de toi. Well, Chops, je suis tellement fier de toi aussi. Okay. All right, so we're gonna get into, um, the actual, uh, things that we're supposed to do. Bonjour, gnome. Welcome to the show. Um, okay, let's do chapter 2 flashcards. And we are going to, uh, find out, où est la salle à dîner? No, start at the beginning. Ooookay. I'm really excited about our guest tomorrow. So I'm, I kind of like didn't prepare as well, because I was thinking about that. Let's see. Let's see how I do. Okay, blanche, blanche. Oh, let's go big screen. Um, that is white. Masculine and feminine, white. Bleu, bleu. This is, uh, blue, obviously. Brun, brun. Um, let me know if I'm saying that right. I'm taking your advice there. Okay, brun, brun. Okay, this is brown. C'est que, c'est que, qui, quel, quel. Okay, c'est que, it's kind of like, c'est qui, c'est qui, c'est qui. C'est que, qui, quel, quel. This is which, what. Uh, ceci, ce, cet, set, se, set, set. Is this t pronounced? Do we say that?
Ceci, ce, cet, cet.
Set. Okay. Um, this is this. This is this. C'est, su, celle.
C'est, su, celle.
Su, 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 su. C'est, su, celle. This is these, these, plural, right? Okay. Combien, how much, how many? Uh, le couteau, couteau.
Le couteau.
Couteau, le couteau. Masculine, it's a knife. Okay? Entrer, I think I've been, entrer, I've been saying this entre, which is wrong. Entrer is at least this infinitive version here. Okay. Entrer. Ici, here. Il, elle, eux.
Il, elle, eux.
Ils, elles, eux is them. No, they. Hmm. Ils, elles, eux, they, do that. Meh. I'll start it. Le miroir.
Le miroir.
Le miroir. It's kind of like a W at the end. Le miroir, which is funny. It's like an M and then an upside, it's like, psh, messed up mirror. Okay. Le miroir. Uh, cool. Neuve, neuve, neuf, neuve, nouveau, nouvelle. This is new? I think we're, we're really past that one. Uh, non, ne pas, not. Okay? La pièce, la pièce, and la salle. These are, this is room. La pièce, let's hear it.
La pièce, la salle.
La pièce, okay? Le plancher, le plancher?
Le plancher.
Yeah, le plancher. This is the floor, le plancher. Le plastique, this is plastic. Quatre, four. Regarder, this is to see, or to look, to watch. I keep saying see. I think they're generally the same, but let's stick to it. To watch. Like, regardez-moi, watch me. Okay. Uh, da-da, rouge, red. Le salon à dîner, this is the dining room. S'asseoir.
S'asseoir.
S'asseoir, this is to sit? S'asseoir. It's to sit, I guess, but there's some kind of little art thing here. What do you call this? Okay. Assoir, s'asseoir. It's like he sits or something. I sit, something sits. Okay. Six, six. La tablette, this is a shelf. La tablette. Le tapis, le tapis, this is, um, the carpet. Right. Le tapis, trois, trois, trois. Le vase, la vase, face. Vide, this is empty. Okay, bam. Um, all right, so killing it there. I think it's time to jump back to our, um, uh, book. Dun, 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 dun. Okay. We're doing it, guys. We're doing it. Um, okay. This is actually pretty, this is a hard part, I think. Let me turn on this light and get this, yeah. Ooh, that's a little, little too harsh. Little too much. Ooh, washing things out. Uh, it's probably better without the light. Okay, so, uh, there's so many in this chapter of these things. So, rather than read through what I did before, I think what I'll do is I'll try to get through what I can. And then tomorrow, with my special guest, um, we're gonna, maybe we'll hit some of these and get some clarification. That's a good plan. Okay. Um, we picked up right here. I've got a star here. So right on that treble word. Non, il est vide? Is it it, et? Est-elle vide? Est-elle vide? Uh, is it empty? I think we're talking about the boulevard, the cattle right now. Uh, non, elle n'est pas vide. It is not empty. Le chat est assé dans la terrière. Ti-terrière. Te-ier, te-ier. La terrière. Jeez. Uh, le chat est, est assé? Tassé? Le chat est tassé. I think there's like a little liaison here. Et, et, and then the voial, vowel. Le chat est assé? Tassé? I think it's tassé? I, i, right? With the i. Um, le chat est assé dans la te-ière. Te-ière. Okay, cool. And that means, the cat is sitting in the, in the teacup, in the teapot. You know, te-ière, in the teapot. Okay? Qu'est-ce qui, c'est, qu'est-ce qui est accroché sur le mur? Qu'est-ce qui, qu'est-ce qui est accroché sur le mur? So, what is hanging sur le mur, on the wall? Uh, c'est une image. And a picture, a picture. It is a picture. C'est, it, un, is, uh, uh, c'est, it is, une image, a picture. C'est une image, okay? L'image est-elle neuve ou vieille? Vieille? I think it's like vie, vie, maybe. Yeah, that feels better. E? I'm gonna start to come back to it. L'image est-elle neuve ou vieille? Uh, and that is, is the picture new or old? Elle est belle et vieille. Vieille. It is, uh, it is beautiful. It is pretty and old. Um, où sont les soviets, soviets? Où sont les soviets de table? So this is all one term. Les soviets de table. Bim, 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 bum, ba, dum, bum, bum. Okay. Où sont, where are? Les soviets de table, table, les soviets de table. The table, the napkins, the table napkins. The napkins, the table napkins. We call them napkins in this book. And in French, they are called the table, the napkins of the table. Uh, okay. Les soviets sont dans une cab, cabinet. Ah, this is, how do you say this word? It's cabinet, obviously. Wait, hold on, that's a placard. I thought we said a cupboard. Why are we learning all these words that aren't in here? Okay. Les soviets sont dans une cabinée. I think that's how you, cabinée. Les soviets sont dans une cabinée. So, the napkins are in a cabinet. A cabinet. Okay? Um, où est le cabinet? Okay, which one, dude? Où est le cabinet? Elle est placé, placée près de l'image. Okay, cool. So it is, il est, and it's le cabinet? So that would, so we're referencing that, and that goes back to il. Uh, so he, le, okay? Il est placé près, it is placed near, uh, de l'image, de l'image, de l'image, de l'image, de l'image. Okay? So it's placed next to the picture. It is next to the picture. It is standing next to the picture. It's placé, kind of standing? Is that what that kind of means? Okay. So many questions, so few answers. This is what happens when you teach yourself. Um, cool. De quel couleur est le cabinet? De quel couleur, cat, il est, oh shit. De quel couleur est le cabinet? Uh, what color is the cabinet? I can't find it. Where is it? What color is it? Give me some clues. Stop with these short sentences. Um, il est blanc. Il est blanc? Blanc, blanc, yeah. Il est blanc. It is white. Why don't you see it? It's right in front of you. I told you exactly where it is. Combien de, à, ter- What is this word? De, à, that was the sound of my brain breaking. Combien, so how many, how much, how many? De, uh, de, okay, wait, hold on, without the d. Uh, that, étajérer, étajérer. It, now what is this word? How many shelves are there in the cabinet? De, oh, like, um, étage, like, like levels, or stairs, or floors. Étage, okay. Détagerer, something, something along those lines. It's pronounced something like that. Combien d'étajerez il y a, or y a dans le cabinet? Cabinée, cabinée. How many, how many, uh, shelves are in the cabinet? Le cabinet a trois étages. Le cabinet a, has, le cabinet a, has, trois étages. I'm just giving up on this word. Sorry. Live to fight another day. We're gonna leave it alone. Okay, the cabinet has four, uh, levels. Oh, ugh, ugh, four levels, four, four shelves. Okay. Où sont les forchettes? Where are the forks? Les forchettes sont aussi dans le cabinet. Uh, they're also in the cabinet. Um, great. That was, oh my god. Ah! Oh, man, that's so much. Okay, cool. Well, um, how about this? Tomorrow, with my special guest, we're gonna go through everything on this first page. Um, and then maybe I'll have time to start the second page? Uh, probably not. I thought we were gonna fly through this, but this is gonna take forever. This is probably looking like another seven-day chapter, unfortunately. Um, but you know what? Life's a journey. Um, learning is a journey. Okay. So, uh, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll leave there for today. So, um, picking back up. Yeah! Give a round of applause for, for me. Uh, okay, I'm going to jump over to my listening exercise. I'm just gonna keep going on this, um, on this one video. You know, you really wanna like drill in sometimes. Uh, there's active listening and there's passive listening. Um, and for the active listening, I'm totally cool with just listening to the same thing over and over and over and over and over. And trying, your hardest to pick it out. Move on, couple days, come back. Listen again, see what you've picked up and digest, and you can pick out. So, um, this is the active. Um, and this story is, uh, from Easy French. It's from the Easy French videos. Uh, we're gonna listen to Rita tell us about her morning. I'll just re-listen to everything that we did yesterday and then get into some new comments from her for the next, we'll do this for the next nine minutes. Okay?
Bonjour, les amis, c'est Rita.
Bonjour, Rita!
Bienvenue dans ma petite cuisine. Alors, comme tous les jours en confinement, je me lève assez tôt le matin pour aléter ma fille, la changer, lui faire prendre son bain, et puis prendre le mien, prendre le petit déjeuner, puis le déjeuner arrive, et l'après-midi, on adore préparer un petit goûter, bien évidemment pour moi et pour mon époux. Alors aujourd'hui, on a décidé de faire des crêpes, c'est très très bon, très traditionnel, et puis on a décidé de préparer ça de la manière la plus simple possible. Alors je vais vous montrer comment on fait ça et quels sont les ingrédients qu'on emploie pour les-
Okay, that was all recap. Um, I honestly, a little bit better. There was a couple things in there that strung together nicely in my head for a minute. Kind of felt like I was understanding. Um, so yay, me! Okay, new section. Um, let's, let's hear it. Let's hear it first.
Et quels sont les ingrédients qu'on emploie? Pour les quantités, on a besoin de quatre œufs.
Pour les quantités, quantités. Pour les quantités. Um, for the quantities, for, for like the recipe, for how much it's asking for, calling for, how much we need. Pour, pour les quantités. Did I get that right? Uh, on a besoin, on a besoin, we have, um, a need for. On a besoin de, we have a need for. Um, on a besoin de quatre œufs, œufs. Okay, for English speakers, this just is the worst. And for us English dyslexic people like me, this is just, I wanna, my brain wants to blow up every time I see, ugh! Um, but I think it's just like, uh, let's listen to it. I think if you close your eyes, it gets easier.
Ingrédients qu'on emploie? Pour les quantités, on a besoin de quatre œufs.
Quatre œufs? Quatre œufs? Like, ugh? Uh-huh? Quatre œufs? On a besoin de quatre œufs, œufs? On a besoin de quatre œufs? Uh, uh, okay. On a besoin de quatre œufs. Okay, so we need four eggs.
On a pris des œufs bio.
On a pris des œufs, on a pris des œufs bio. That's what she says. On a pris de, des œufs bio. And bio is organic. So these eggs are organic. I think on a pris, I don't really understand what on, on a pris. I guess pris is like got, taken, taught, have picked up or something. Um, but similar to on a besoin, instead of saying like, you'd think we just like, we, on, and need, bes- besoin. But you have to put this à in there. So I'm thinking, my, at least my assumption right now is this, on a besoin et on a pris, and then, and then whatever's following. So on a besoin, we need, and on a pris, we got. I think that's kind of what I'm, what I'm picking up here.
Quand on emploie? Pour les quantités, on a besoin de quatre œufs. On a pris des œufs bio.
On a pris des œufs bio? Okay?
On a besoin d'une petite pincée de sal à la fin.
Ah, okay. It's just so much. Okay. On a besoin d'une petite pincée de sal à la fin. Um, don't you hate it when these sentences are like, they take up this much time in the world? You just can't, you don't understand them at all. Uh, on a besoin, again, this is the same sentence structure we had before. On a besoin d'une petite pincée de sal à la fin. So, we need a small pinch of salt at the end. So, d'une petite pincée, I think pincée, d'une petite pincée, a small pin, a small pinch. Small pinch, pincer, pincer, pincée. Um, and then de sel, is it sel or sa, sel? Sal. De sel is salt. À la fin, at the end. Fin, fin, it's like the movies, you know? Like, bing, fin, done. Okay, à la fin, at the end. That makes sense. Um, there's some, some weird stuff going on. It's inferred, we will need a small pinch at the end? Um, I guess at the end is the signifier of we will need? Instead of just, we need a small pence, pinch. We need a small petite pincée. Um, so, but the future tense here. On aura besoin. Now, granted, or like, I don't know future tense all that well. I've like barely scratched the surface there, so like, um, but I do know they're, you know, obviously, translation here. So, on aura besoin d'une petite pincée de sal à la fin. And they're, I think they're just helping us with these things. Uh, anyway, let's try to listen to that one more time.
On a pris des œufs bio. On a besoin d'une petite pincée de sal à la fin.
Petite pince de sal à la fin. Font, à la fin. That's kind of what I got.
On a besoin d'une petite pincée de sal à la fin.
Petite pince à la sal de, à la fonce. Petite pince de sal.
On a pris des œufs bio. On a besoin d'une petite pincée de sal à la fin.
Petite pince de sal à la fonce. I was saying fin, it's fond. That's the way she's saying it. Okay. That's decent. Oh! Oh, no. My trackpad is dying.
Pour la farine de blé, on a besoin de 250 g. Et pour le sucre, ça, tout était déjà préparé, on a besoin de 70 g de sucre en poudre. Et le lait, comme vous pouvez le voir ici, on a une bouteille de 1 litre, mais à l'intérieur, il ne reste plus que-
Okay, well, I went too far. Okay. Um, et pour le sucre, tu étais déjà préparé? On a besoin, and we go on. So, et pour le sucre? As for the sugar? Tu étais déjà préparé? Everything, tu, uh, était, was, past tense. Yay! Tu étais déjà, and some, I don't, I don't know this very well, so it's okay. Um, I'm saying yay, I knew that was in some kind of past tense form. Uh, tu étais déjà préparé? On a besoin de, on a besoin de, what?
Et pour le sucre, ça, tout était déjà préparé, on a besoin de su-
Man, that's so fast. Tu étais, tu étais, on a, pour le sucre?
Et pour le-
Uh, pour le sucre, tu étais déjà, tu étais déjà, tu étais déjà préparé? So fast.
Le sucre, ça, tout était déjà préparé, on a besoin de 70 g de sucre en poudre.
70 g de sucre en poudre?
Et le lait, comme vous pouvez-
Et le lait, comme vous pouvez, pouvez le voir?
Une bouteille de 1 litre, mais à l'intérieur, il ne reste plus que ce qu'il nous faut, c'est-à-dire 60 centilitres de lait.
Euh... 70 g, 70, 70 g, gr- 70 g. Oh, pour la fer, oh, I'm, I skipped a little section here. Pour la ferne de blé? Ferne de blé? Pour la ferne de blé? What is it? Pour la, then, farine de blé? I'm guessing that's wheat flour, farine de blé. On a besoin de 250 g, 250 g.
À la fin, pour la farine de blé, on a besoin de 250 g. Et pour le sucre, ça, tout était déjà préparé, on a besoin de 70 g de sucre en poudre. Et le lait, comme vous pouvez le voir ici, on a une bouteille de 1 litre, mais à l'intérieur, il ne reste plus que-
Mais l'intérieur, but inside, l'intérieur, il ne restait plus. Mais à l'intérieur, but inside, à l'intérieur, il ne restait plus? Only what we need? Il ne restait plus que ce qu'il nous faut. Oh gosh, what is this sentence structure? What is happening here? Only what we need of it is left. Mais à l'intérieur, but inside this bottle, il ne restait uh is like, what's, I, in there, what stays in there? Il ne restait plus que, il ne restait plus que ce qu'il nous faut, ce qu'il nous faut.
Ce qu'il nous faut, c'est-à-dire soixante-
C'est à dire, which means, c'est à dire soixante-
Centilitres de lait. Plus que ce qu'il nous faut, c'est-à-dire soixante centilitres de lait.
Soixante, centre litre de lait, centre litre, centre litre de lait. C'est à dire soixante, centre dire, dire de lait, voilà. I think ending on voilà is a good spot. Okay, well, I kinda went down the rabbit hole there for a minute. Cool, that was fun. Hope you guys enjoyed it, I think that's where we're gonna end it today. Join me tomorrow at some time. And uh I'll have a special guest on, who, who might be a certain French speaker from a certain band that I'm in. Okay, thanks so much for watching, hope you guys had fun today. Au revoir, au, à bientôt.